House of honor. By the nations.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of Sunny Brook School District 171 is to maximize student achievement by cultivating critical thinking skills, innovative instructional practices, and collaborative school, home, and community partnership. Roll call.
Tamara Hill. Timothy Terrell.
Present.
Desiree Ambrose.
Present.
Cassie Hill.
Here.
Kedisha LaShaw.
Here.
Nicole Thompson.
Here.
Lisa Bell Davis here.
Any person wishing to address the board about an item that is on the agenda should do so when that item is up with the discussion. Visitor statements will be limited to two minutes per person. A total of thirty minutes will be allocated for visitor's comments. All comments about items not on the agenda will be held until visitor's statement at the end of the meeting. Items related to personnel issues will be redirected to the appropriate administrator. Item F, recommended motion to approve the regular Board of Educating Meet Education Meeting meetings minute of September sixteenth, twenty twenty four, October expenses and September payroll in the amount of one million three hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty-five cents presented.
Motion. Motion by Ambrose, second by Terrell. Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Cassie Hill.
Yes.
Felice Davis, no.
Item G, communication. Item H, informational item. Either. Um, we've gone straight to M, the MN. No, Mr. Schreider.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, just informational item, uh, at last school board meeting, we, uh, we presented and adopted our annual school budget. And then before you is the tentative levy, uh, that would be request, uh, for the, um, property tax dollars locally. Um, the request is less than five percent, so there is no truth in taxation hearing that needs to be held. And so at the November school board meeting, uh, is when the levy presentation will be had, uh, will be presented. And then we would vote on levy at that time. If you should have any questions about the informational or tentative levy that is before you, uh, please let me know. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a long-term substitute teacher, Mr. Timothy Howard Junior at Nathan Hill School. There was a FOIA request for a smart procure requesting copies from that, um, July eighteenth, twenty twenty four to current of the following. Purchase order number, purchase date, line item details, line item quantity, line item price, vendor ID, number, name, address, contact person, and their email address. That'll be good. Board reports.
It's board number has one in the reports.
I do, well, I'm sure you can see the kids right there. I did go with them to, uh, Ron Clark Academy, but I'll wait for them to visit.
Okay. Well, we don't hold out on that parade presentation until it come up.
We have a little short length of presentation.
Right.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, administrative report, Dr. Millhouse. Okay, Dr. Lori Oenstra.
Good evening, Dr. Millhouse, teachers, school board members, and our community. Uh, we are excited to announce that we are going to be hosting our second Nigerian heritage night here on October twenty-fourth, uh, from four thirty to six thirty. This event will celebrate the rich culture and heritage of Nigeria through performances, music, and more. Food will be available to purchase during this event. We look forward to seeing our students, our families, our staff members here to celebrate. Yay.
Uh, Mr. Schreider, do you have anything else?
Nothing for listening.
Um, Ms. Julian Green.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Our prepaid program is going well. It's went so well that we just added an additional screen date of Friday, December sixth. So please call the office if you'd like to register your, uh, three or four-year-olds to get screened. The dental bus recently came out, um, for two days, and so far this school year, we were able to screen and examine over a hundred and forty more students with their dental records. And I wanted to say thank you to all of the parents who are working with our nurses regarding school exclusion. On October fifteenth, we had twenty-two students excluded. Today we have four, so one more point. Thank you.
Dr. Um, Mike McGowan.
Uh, number four this time.
Ms. Chantel Cambridge, husband boy here at his little school.
Good day, you people. How are you guys?
Good.
Thank you so much for having me. There are only four more girls' basketball games happening, so I left for the season. It's almost over. Remember, we talked about the light? Yeah, I didn't see you, but I still. Sometimes I'll be in my own space, and that's okay. Boys' basketball is beginning, though. We had our, our tryouts today. Seventy boys showed up for tryouts, um, so we will be selecting those, those students tomorrow. The end of the first quarter is happening on Friday, so the teachers are preparing for report cards and parent teacher conferences, which are scheduled for November fourth from twelve to seven P. M. Over at Heritage, we will have our virtual conferences from twelve to three, which will be scheduled. And then our in-person conferences will be from four to seven. Yes, I'm sorry.
Did I do that right?
Yeah, twelve to three, virtual conferences, and then four to seven, in-person conferences. Those imperfect, in-person conferences will be walk-ins, so parents will just be able to come in and, and see the teachers that they would like to see. Each grade level has their specified groups. You guys will get that information as you enter. Um, so we look forward to the parents coming out so that we can, uh, meet for parent teacher conferences. We all know that Heritage Houses is doing an amazing job creating community and collaboration and leaders in our school. We took a group of students to Atlanta at the beginning of October, um, so that they can experience the leadership, uh, conference that Ron Clark Academy offers. I think it was a great experience for them, and actually, I've gone to the summer conferences as well. I appreciated this conference a little bit more, mostly because at the summer conferences, it's a lot of talking to, to the adults. Well, with the kids, we were really able to get some hands-on experience to see what it's like. I'm a visual learner, uh, and so to be able to sit back and watch what it is and what it is that they do and how they implement the houses, I think it was so much more beneficial, and I was really happy and grateful to you guys to allow us to take our students, uh, our student leaders, and I'm sure the experience was something amazing for them. I would like to have some of our student leaders that went to Heritage Houses come up and give a small, a small presentation, just some takeaways of some of the things we did. We did, we did take ten students with us, all ten of them were not able to come tonight, but we do have, we have thirty-six house leaders within our building. And so we got a portion of our house leaders up here as well, and then we have a small treat for you guys after they do their presentations. Come on up. Oh, while, while they're walking up, let me just stop and just, you know, I am all in gratitude and appreciation. Ms. Washington has been amazing. She is, uh, leader of, um, House of Creativity, we call Antanuda. And although she is, she oversees that house, which by the way, we had a tailgate event, uh, last Friday, it was amazing too. Um, she has been instrumental in securing and ensuring that this house system is solid in its foundation, and I'm really, really, really am thankful for you, and I so appreciate you. Come on, that's amazing. Come on, Louis, go first, buddy. You got it. You, you're a leader, right? What we saying? How we do this? Go for it.
Hi, my name is. Hi, my name is Melissa Carr, and my experience at Ron Clark Academy was great. We learned new things that can help us with this house system and how to make it better. And some of the things that we learned were some, like some, making a cheer just clean and, um, you need hype and then it's.
Thank you. Good job.
Hello, my name is Damani Ambrose, and we learned about a lot of things while we were at the Ron Clark Academy. So what we learned about is like pigeons and eagles. So basically, like a pigeon just stays on the ground a lot, and like the seagulls, they, I mean, the eagles, they, they sort high. You gotta reach your goal. You can't just sit on the ground like a pigeon and just pick off whatever's there. I believe that all students deserve a chance to go to Ron Clark Academy because that was a very fun experience, and I would love to go to the Academy.
My name is Cormac Henderson, and I'll be speaking on the behalf of the eighth grade house leaders. So we went to Ron Clark Academy, one of the first things we noticed is that all the kids there had a lot of energy, the staff, everyone. Everybody was hyped up, it was very warm and welcoming, and I also liked, uh, Damani said that everybody should be able to have a chance to go to Ron Clark Academy. That's a very good experience.
Hi, my name is Agia, and I'm in eighth grade, I'm a eighth grade head of house. Um, our experience at Ron, Ron Clark Academy was very fun. Like Cormac said, the, they were very energetic, like they were jumping on tables.
We not hyped this.
It was, it was like very fun, and we knew it was a good experience, and I would love to go again, but sadly I can't.
Why?
Because I'm graduating.
Oh, you're graduating. That's okay. Ms. Ambrose, how was your experience at Ron Clark?
Oh, although I am not a teacher, I had, um, a very good time. It was a lot, it was helpful information. Um, a lot of times we as adults are scared to let kids be leaders and let them be who they are as leaders, but they'll never figure it out if we don't let them. So, uh, to, for the group of children that went with us, they were very romantic. We had an awesome time, we sat in the restaurant for three hours. So, um, I would do, I would definitely chaperone again, and of course, Damani likes to participate in everything that you have. Uh, so, so, no, but honestly, it was a very good experience. Um, it does give the kids confidence, it teaches them team building and community, and, um, some of the students actually showed it. I was in session with the seventh graders. Um, it was a young lady that was shy to talk, and her fellow classmates spoke up for her and talked about how she had all these good qualities, it made her more comfortable to start sharing. So I, I had a good experience with the kids.
That's what, what was worse, Ms. Camer.
Yeah.
I personally was stressed out.
I know.
So you know that. In front of Martin, you got on the bus, you made it to the airport, you landed, I think I texted this to Camer about fifty times in three days.
That's right. It was.
No, they were, no, they were good in the, they were good in the airport, they were good on the plane, and that, when I say, the kids that went with us, they go anywhere.
Yeah, they did an amazing job. Okay, so now what we're gonna do, I'm gonna have my house leaders, and remember, there are thirty-six of them altogether, but it's only a few of them, a few of them are here today. I want you guys to come stand behind the board speakers. Come on up. Come on up. So one of the things that we do at Heritage, which is something that's different from Ron Clark, when we sort our house, when we sort our students, we only sort our fifth grade students. Our fifth grade students, we talk about this, get the eagle egg, and then that's how they determine, that's how we determine what house they're in. Because at Heritage Houses, the house picks you. You don't get to pick your house. So although maybe your favorite color is orange, and maybe you think your favorite characteristic is friendship, and maybe you like D.O., D.O. D.O., S.D.I. Maybe you like that, but guess what? You might be in Amamiehe, you might be in Valantia, you might be in Antanuda because your house picks you. And so today, the houses are gonna pick the board. And the district administrators.
I was an awesome girl, I've been here for three years.
I didn't want to get in the house.
Don't open it, don't open it, don't open it. You get in the house.
That's what I said, I've been here for three years, and I told her, don't.
That's what I said, take your day.
Listen. Purple, 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 that's what you said. We not finished yet. All right, so.
Let it happen, Mrs. McGowan.
Oh, yeah. All right. Okay, one more time, Ms. Terrell. So. D.O., D.O. D.O., D.O. Ms. Ambrose, who are you? Let's do one. What you got? Who are you? What you got? Who are we? I'm a A.M.I.H.E. All right, Ms. Bell Davis. That's it. A.T.I.U.D.A. Antanuda. Okay, come on, you got two at home. Let's get into the house divided. A.T.I.U.D.A. Antanuda. All right, Ms. Thompson, let's go. D.O., D.O. D.O., D.O. Ms. Green, who are you? What house chose you? Oh. A.M.A.M.I.H.E. Ms. Schreider. And Ms. Schreider. D.O., D.O. D.O., D.O. All right, Dr. Low, what you got? Hi. Bathers. L. O. A.T.I.U.D.A. Antanuda. Dr. McGowan, last but not least. D.O., D.O. D.O., D.O. All right. Put your congratulations, your house chose you, but wait a minute, your house leaders got something for you. Please put your ring on. You have been chosen, this is your house. We'll make sure you get all the correspondence, you'll be added to the checklist. Only one thing to start having, and we expect to see you at our house, because, oh, we got a house divided. The Ambroses are divided. Wait, the heels are divided. You, oh, both you girls are not in the game. The heels are divided, we have the house divided. Congratulations, your house chose you. Okay, but yes, Ms. LaShaw. I don't think everybody knows what each house. Okay, so the house, the orange house of friendship is who we, what we call Dosti. Um, the green house of wisdom is Amamiehe. The yellow house of bravery is Valantia. And the purple house of creativity is Antanuda. Okay, house leaders, thank you guys so much for coming tonight. Thank you for showing up and being here. Go ahead, let's have a seat so we can get finished with our board meeting. Thank you for showing down at you, go ahead and have a seat so we can get finished with our board meeting.
Thank you all.
Congratulations, you guys, the house has been chosen. Congratulations, you're a house divided.
And Ms. Washington, and, uh, Ms. Hill have a man, Antanuda.
Antanuda?
Ms., Ms. Hill.
Antanuda. All right, is there a question?
And Louis was the only sixth grader that went with us.
Yes.
So that means on graduation day.
Yes. Yeah, I have to wrap the house.
And who's excited? Uh, Mr. Joseph Kent, freshman boy, Nathan Hale.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I can't even get started because that was fantastic. That was nice. Um, just very quickly, um, I know H and S came bringing things. I'm coming to ask for things. Just in case you get the opportunity, it is socktober, over at Nathan Hale starting today, going to November first. So whether you can bring a pair of socks or drop off a package of socks, it is all good. It must be a lesson to someone that is less fortunate. Just bring it on by, would be glad to have it. This is also supporting our student council. And then finally, at the end of the week, it is crazy to believe that the first quarter is over. But it's not only over there. We're looking into cancer awareness. So over at Nathan Hale, we'll be getting our pink on. So if you have anything pink, feel free to drop on by and just be a part of supporting and allowing us to get it out there that we are supporting everyone who's fighting against this horrible, horrible disease. Uh, we have our parent-teacher conferences coming up. As Cambridge had mentioned, the schedules are, are coming out Wednesday, I believe it is. Hours looks a little different for Nathan Hale parents. Uh, the first half an hour, twelve to twelve-thirty will be virtual. And then, uh, from twelve-thirty to seven o'clock, it'll be in-person, face-to-face conferences. So please make sure you sign up and come on in. We've had a great beginning of the year, and we want to keep the momentum going after this.
The policy committee, second reading, we're gonna wave and adopt. Item K, recommended motion. Recommended motion to waive the second reading and adopt the policy listed above as presented.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Terrell. Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes.
Um, item K two, recommended motion to appoint Mr. David Schreiter, chief school business official as trustee of schools for Sunny Brook School District 171 to serve with Little Township Trustee for Schools as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by C Hill. Ambrose.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes.
K three, recommended motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four certified staff compensation report as presented.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Terrell. Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes.
K four, recommended motion to approve the student accident insurance policy with Urban Life Insurance Company as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by C Hill, second by Terrell. C Hill.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes.
K five, recommended motion to counsel twenty thirteen fifteen-year lease with Land O'Carrie District effective immediately.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by LaShaw, second by Ambrose. LaShaw.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes.
K six, recommended motion to approve the installation of a chain-link fence at the southeast property line at Nathan Hale by Fence Masters, Inc. in the amount of fourteen thousand, fourteen dollars as presented. Permission.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by Terrell. Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes.
Item, um, K seven, we're omitting that one. We already, um, voted. So we're gonna jump to K eight, recommended motion to approve the Nathan Hale stage enclosure with CMM Group, Inc. not to exceed thirty-eight thousand as presented. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ambrose, second by C Hill. Ambrose.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes.
K nine, recommended motion to approve the purchase of the English three D and mirror reading resources from Fulton, Missland Hardcore HM, HMH to support our bilingual students. The total cost will not exceed fifty-five thousand to be funded through Title I, Title One, Title Three, and General Fund. Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by LaShaw, second by Ambrose. LaShaw.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes.
Are there any visitor statements? Um, we don't have to go to closed session, so recommended motion to move to adjourn as soon as.
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion by Ambrose, second by Terrell. Ambrose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
LaShaw.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
C Hill.
Yes.
Fellows Davis, yes. They returned at six fifty-seven.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.